Call the meeting to order at 7:05. 2.0 adjustments to the agenda, are there any, is there a need for any adjustments?
I'm going to make my comments about the convention.
About the, oh, about the convention, okay. So we can get rid of 5.3. Thank you. Anything else? All right, 3.0, audience and communication. Okay. All right, great. Thanks for coming. 4.0 presentations, 4.1 K-2 academic program. And I guess this is Greg's show.
Okay, so this is the first, what I think we could call, a series of presentations around the board outcome of robust academic foundation. And the focus of tonight's presentation is around the kindergarten through second grade academic program. So obviously, everything we do comes through the lens of our CCS mission, which I'll just leave up there for 20 seconds or so, if you could review. Smiling faces from earlier in the year. Thought it would be good to do a little bit of an overview around the Common Core, since that is definitely a driver of our programmatic work these days. So this is just a quick glance at the adoption, it's an adoption map here. All the states in the lighter shade are states that have adopted the Common Core. These are national standards that are replacing the Vermont GEs. And essentially, Common Core standards define the knowledge and skills students should have within their K-12 education, so that they graduate high school able to succeed in entry-level, credit-bearing academic college courses and in workforce training programs. And essentially, the Common Core, the creation of the Common Core was a response to an outcry based on research, based on employers, based on even the military, saying, universities saying that students coming out of high school, there was a tremendous gap between what they were doing in high school in terms of rigor and complexity and what was expected in terms of ability to read and comprehend and analyze, synthesize complex texts, technical texts. And the group of educators who put the Common Core standards basically worked backwards from what is expected to be successful in a workforce, even entry-level or credit-bearing college work, and let's work backwards from 12th grade to kindergarten, make sure kids have the skills to do that. So this is not something that's just coming out of thin air. It's been a transition timeline since 2010 that arrow indicates where we are there. And essentially, we have now aligned curriculum with the Common Core. We have aligned classroom assessments. And our school accountability is still based on NECA. You'll see the difference between Phase 4, full implementation, is all our instruction, our curriculum, our assessments, including school-wide implementation, the school-wide accountability, is then moving over to S-Back. I'll talk a little bit more about S-Back. This is the local version of this same idea. And this really illustrates how thoughtful the SU has been about approaching the Common Core. And I'm happy to say that we're right on track under Molly, Molly's leadership, in terms of where we are in building our knowledge and understanding of what the Common Core shifts are going to be. So we're right there in the fourth or the fifth year in implementation. And again, I'll get a little bit more into the bases, the focus, the FOSI shifts, ELA and math later in the presentation. So big ideas from the Common Core, and for many of you, you've heard some of this before. But four big ideas here on this page, although this is right out of the ELA section of the Common Core, these ideas can really cross across all the content areas. Students should be able to read complex texts, not just read them, but understand them. And that there's a greater emphasis on informational text and informative writing. So text that informs the reader and writing that informs the reader. Students need to be able to evaluate and gather evidence, so when they're, let's say, responding to a prompt, that they're not responding just based on their own experiences, but they're responding based on evidence that they're getting, either from artifacts in the text or other evidence, charts, graphs, whatever. And that they can integrate information into clear, coherent writing that demonstrates critical thinking. And again, this, these are from the ELA section, but they cross over into other content. So just a little bit about S-Back. Again, I apologize for some repetition, but I think it's good to do an overview here. S-Back stands for Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. And it will replace the NECA assessments in language arts and mathematics as a summative standardized assessment for students' grades 3 through 11. So our school accountability is, system basically moves over to S-Back. They're going to be administered for the first time next spring. These are administered on computers. This is not a pencil and paper task. And that's across the board. And these assessments are standardized and personalized at the same time.
Excuse me, next spring or the spring of 2015?
2015.
The spring of 2015. I'm considering next spring to be the spring after, this coming spring.
So we just did the kneecaps in fall? There won't be any kneecaps next fall? It's going to be a year and a half before we get to the next.
Exactly. Yep, about 15, 16 months from now. So they're standardized, but yes, yet there's an adaptive technology involved. So based on an answer a student gives on a particular question, the software will steer the student to another question based on the response to that question. So every student will have a different, slightly different testing experience. So obviously, there are technology implications for kindergarten through second grade. You know, what I'm thinking about, what we're thinking about, is we want students in third grade who are going to be taking this assessment for the very first time, as the assessment's going to look different, feel different from anything they've ever done, other than the opportunity to take some practice assessments before then. We want them to be able to show what they know. And for students to be able to do that, especially our third graders, current second graders, the testing platform should not be hindrance. So we don't want this experience to be about the platform. We don't want this experience to be about the computer. So we're asking ourselves the question, what instructional experiences with technology, hardware, and software do our current kindergarten through second grade students need to have, so that they are able to show what they know in ELA and math in the spring of 2015? And that focus, that question, is really the main focus of our local technology committee this year. This is also a topic that we talked about a few days ago at the lead, the lead committee, at the lead meeting. This is a quote right out of the core about media and technology. And essentially, this runs throughout the core, and they're saying, just as media and technology are integrated in school and life, since 21st century, that the skills related to the media use and technology are integrated throughout the standards. Technology, media, use, analysis of, critical analysis of media, aren't looked at as discrete standards, but are instead integrated across different contents. So again, just wanted to drive home some of the tech implications of some of the, here are some writing standards. And you'll see, even though, even back in kindergarten, with guidance and support from adults, so I should, the coding here is that this is the kindergarten standard, same standard, first grade version, same standard, standard, second, third grade. With guidance and support from adults, explore a variety of digital tools to produce and publish writing, including in collaboration with peers. There's a little bit of a continuum there. So if you look down at the third grade version, with guidance and support from adults, use technology to produce and publish writing using keyboarding skills, as well as to interact and collaborate with others. If you look at the fourth grade standard, which I didn't put up here, because there wasn't room on the slide, but it reads, "After the third grade language, demonstrate sufficient command of keyboarding skills to type a minimum of one page in a single, to type a minimum or one page in a single city." I'm sorry, a minimum of one page in a single city. Fourth grade. So all our academic program is in an instructional context, where we need to have a supportive school climate, that there's relationships of trust and care between students and teachers, especially, between families and teachers, students and families in the school. There's knowledge among staff about developmental progressions of learners, that we've got teachers with robust content knowledge and pedagogical expertise, that we have Common Core-aligned curricular programs, the Little P. Some of you have heard Little P, Big P. When you say Little P, we're talking about the purchased curricula, like the Lucy Cawkins Writing Curriculum, like Bridges in Mathematics, those are Little P. When we talk about Big P program, we talk about our math program and the pedagogy associated with it, the curriculum materials, and everything that goes with the professional development. And we need instructional delivery that is aligned through the Common Core State Standards, and then integrates research-based strategy and teacher moves. Teacher moves are in quotes there, because it's language that we're using more and more these days with the best practices in mathematics course. And it's fun that we're, as administrators, to be sharing in this professional development, sitting with the teachers in this professional development. And there's a lot of focus on, they use the language moves. The teacher's making a move right there, and we call out the move. It's a discreet, you know, it's a discreet maneuver. It's a technique, it's a strategy. And that move you just made just increased the learning productivity of that moment. So we're, that's some language I wanted to get out to you. So on-target professional development is a big part of this, and this isn't new information for any of you, but basically, CSSU and CCS professional development FOSI have been and will continue to be aligned with instructional demands and shifts driven by the Common Core State Standards and research-based best instructional practice. In-service days have been devoted to increasing familiarity and understanding of the Common Core and allowing professionals time to integrate the Core into units of study. School and SU-wide focus in ELA, helping students read and understand more complex tests, texts, especially informational texts, and helping students to integrate information into clear, coherent writing that demonstrates critical thinking. More on our professional development, and you've heard a lot about our math professional development, but this is just to reiterate that all of our teachers of math are immersed in best practices in math coursework. This is research-based coursework. It's a pedagogical focus, as opposed to content. We do not talk about bridges, well, I shouldn't say that. Of course, we talk about bridges because we're talking about the lessons being taught, and we are working with the lesson being taught, but the focus isn't on the program or the materials, the focus is on the instructional moves. And the instructional practices that are embedded in the best practices are all Common Core-aligned. It's creating a common language throughout the school and district around effective math instruction. And we're noticing, if you ask the best practices in math people about this, they'll say, no, 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 we can't talk about other impact on other content areas, because our program is all about, around the research in math. So they get very uncomfortable when you talk about, oh, you should see what we saw on a writing lesson the other day. The teacher was having some structured math, some structured talk around the writing, and wow, it was powerful. And they're thrilled to hear it. But what they'll tell you is, all their research is around math. What Audrey and I are noticing is that these practices and strategies and teacher moves are impacting instruction across the board, because some of them are just strictly better instructional moves. So we're getting into some of the Little P stuff here. Literacy and language arts, we have, we use a readers and writers workshop model. It's basically the Teachers College Balanced Literacy Approach. We have new Common Core-aligned Lucy Cawkins grade level units. That's, this image here is just an image of those materials. Our word study, we're shifting to the updated Common Core-aligned version of the Foundations Program, which is our K-2 word study program. In math, we are shifting over to the Common Core-aligned version of the Bridges in Mathematics Program. As most of you know, there's a number corner element of that, that's 15 to 20 minutes a day, and a daily math lesson, that's 60 minutes. And then the weekly opportunity is to build conceptual fact fluency. What we are noticing is that it's, we are having a bit of a challenge in terms of finding instructional minutes throughout the course of the week to work in that computational fact fluency on a regular basis, so that's something that we're continuing to look at. Science. Now, this is interesting, because many of you might have heard about the NGSS, or the Next Generation Science Standards. Those standards are complete, they have been published. We have a plan at CSSU to roll them out. While we're taking it nice and easy under Molly's leadership, because of everything else that is going on, and because there isn't a really tight time push on this in terms of the change in assessment, these are going to be rolled out to staff 2014 and '15 next year. But in the background, science leaders from across the district are meeting and really digging into these new standards. These five bullets you see at the top of the slide here are the five strands of the Vermont GE Science in Vermont, great expectations in science. Inquiry, physical science, life science, human body, the universe, earth and the environment. And our current FOSI in science are, as outlined in our action plan, we have integration of science notebooks. In the elementary and the K-2, really, we're using the language more about journals, we're calling them journals. Increased practice and proficiency with inquiry skills. We are implementing the SU-wide science inquiry tasks annually, and of course, we're integrating literacy and math skills into science. History and social sciences, otherwise known as social studies. Again, these are the strands, the Vermont GEs. These are not sort of replaced or supplanted by the Common Core. But everything we do in social studies and science is going to have Common Core-aligned English Language Arts instruction, reading and writing. So if you think about kindergarten and second grade, kindergarten through second grade and social studies, an easy way to think about what it is, is it's basically, in kindergarten, you're kind of getting a sense of self, and who I am, and what makes me me, and I'm different from the person next to me. And then as you get first and second grade, it's the relationship to me, myself, and the people around me, they're my community, and in the world I live in, and the interaction of that. So it's kind of, that's, that's the progression. And that obviously extends through the intermediate grades, too. This project, this is an example of a project that Kelly Bootleer and Colleen Brady had done, and it's kind of a microcosm of that idea. This is called Me on the Map. And it's a, there's a clip that pins all this together. And in this very small, the smallest circle is a picture of a child, or a drawing of the child. And under that is, you know, his house, and under that is his town. And under that is Vermont, and under that is the United States, and then North America, and then the planet. So just that sense of the relationship of, here I am, and I'm part of this bigger world. Mapping skills are another important part of social studies, especially first and second grades. You might notice this if you've been in the 1969 lane lately. This is a project where the second grade team is asking for postcards from their students, from anybody they know from anywhere in the country, and they're keeping track of where those postcards are coming from, and having discussions about the United States and geography there. And here is an example of a student who made an imaginary, a pretend map, a map of a pretend place, and, but before they could make their map, they had to identify a key. And that's essentially, that's a big-picture academic program in K-2 at Charlotte. Obviously, Common Core, big driver for us right now. So questions?
I have a question, Greg. Because I'm already starting to think about the budget, I know that's not what this presentation is about.
Yes.
But, you know, as you have curriculum materials that are realigned with the Common Core, like foundations, and, you know, even potentially Bridges 2, what, I mean, what do you see down the line in terms of budget impact? Can you say anything about that now?
Yes, I can. We have already made the switch over to the K-2 Bridges, that's aligned with the Common Core. We plan to make the shift to the newer version of the 3 through 5, fifth grade Bridges.
You mean via the supplements, or via, and I understand that they're like republishing Bridges 2?
Yes, we're talking about the whole kit and caboodle new edition.
Okay.
We, this year, we're using some supplements.
Yeah.
So that we can make sure that our content is aligned to the Common Core.
Yeah.
Next year, teachers will have the new kits in hand.
Okay.
That will be part of this next budget. However, Audrey and I have talked about, and our math coordinator, Stephanie Sumner, have talked about the advantage of having those materials this fiscal, before this fiscal year ends. So we are going to try to do what we can with inch and pennies to see if there's a way we can buy these materials this fiscal year. Because what we learned last time with the new aligned K-2 materials is that it's a bigger shift. They're saying K-2 is a bigger shift than 3.5. So that's good news, because K-2 was more of a shift than we thought. And the two days that we had of the summer unpacking and get to new Bridges turned out to be insufficient for teachers. It's really quite different. So we're trying to get the materials in-house this spring, so we can be a little bit more ahead of that time.
And what about the Lucy Cawkins Writing Materials? Is that already in?
Lucy Cawkins Writing Materials are already in. We'd like to buy more versions, so people aren't trading back and forth kits.
Yeah.
But we expect to be able to do that without a dramatic impact to the budget.
Great.
I do think there are technology implications that you'll see in our budget proposal related to this. Won't be anything radically different than last year, but definitely implications.
Okay.
Elaine, this question's for you. You don't have to look at me when you answer, because I'm sitting in the wrong place. But what's your perception of the relationship, the evolution, however we want to describe it, No Child Left Behind, Common Core?
I don't necessarily think that the two things are related. I think No Child Left Behind came out of a sense back in, like, the early 2000s, that we had spent as a country a lot of money on Title I and other programs, and we had seen no change in closing the achievement gap. So No Child Left Behind really focused on, we need, we really need to close the achievement gap, and the way we're going to do that is we're going to hold schools accountable. So it was a big stick kind of program. Common Core was an initiative of the 50 state governors and the 50 state either commissioners or secretaries of education, who came together and said, it would make sense in our country to have some common standards. As we were looking at kneecap results, well, we were doing kneecaps, other states were doing other kinds of testing, we realized that you couldn't even compare from one state to the next. So that's on one level, to have more rigorous standards, to kind of think about the 21st century learning skills that we know all kids will need to develop some standards. So that wasn't a federal government thing, that really was the governors, state governors and the state commissioners. I think undergirding all of that, too, is the notion that our kids are very mobile. Even in our own supervised reunion, kids move from Charlotte to Heinsburg, maybe to Williston, maybe back to Charlotte, and that happens across the country. And to give kids really a shot at becoming educated young adults, we needed to have some sense of, what are the basic core things that all kids need? Does that answer?
Any other questions?
Local tests, how do you align the local test exam, test, teacher might give in a classroom with the Common Core?
Much of that is done, Little P program, so the new Bridges Edition, that's Common Core-aligned, the assessments are Common Core-aligned. The Lucy Cawkins Writing Curriculum, all of that is aligned with the Common Core. The rubrics that we're using to score writing are aligned with the Common Core in mind. So the local, the fact fluency assessments that we give have been adjusted, thanks to a lot of work on the math coordinator's part, based on the new Common Core benchmarks for what kids should be able to do in different grades, which are actually more rigorous than they were. So that, a lot of that work is happening at the SU level, and some of it is built into the new aligned curricular materials.
Did I hear you say that the science standards are completed and published? Is that?
Correct. It's called the NGSS, Next Generation Science Standards.
And how did that happen? Who did that?
I think.
That's not my area of expertise, Audrey, I don't know if you want to jump in there.
I don't know for sure, but I think it's the National Association of Science Educators that worked on those standards.
Yeah, I know Molly spoke at a recent meeting how those developed, but...
It was different from the Common Core, though. It is a different group.
It is a different.
It's a different group. And it's this, whatever, the National Organization of Science Educators, K-16.
I think if you go on the website and you put ngss.org, you can go up and you can see the whole site, and it actually shows all the new standards.
The people who developed it.
And the people who developed it.
And you may have explained this, how is that integrated with the Common Core? What's the point here?
It's not. The Common Core is ELA and math. With social studies, it's our job to make sure the social studies instruction that we're doing is infused with, you know, Common Core-aligned reading and writing skills, that kids can really inquire and read complex texts and write about evidence-based, in an evidence-based way.
Complex texts on any subject.
Correct. And, yeah, and the science Next Generation Standards are a separate thing from the Common Core, but they're going to be more inquiry-based and more engineering. There's going to be more engineering built into it. So it will align better with the Common Core standards than it would have with the Vermont standards. But the two of them don't necessarily link up.
I can share, just, I'm on the committee, the study committee for science, and we're learning, we're learning more about the NGSS. And the last meeting we had, we actually went online to look at the standards, and we're calling performance standards. But what they're doing is they're showing the standards, and then it shows you a link to the Common Core, and now you can link to the ELA and the math pieces. So it's kind of, it's going to be integrated. But again, we're still studying it as a full committee, K to 12. So they're, they're trying to do some alignment. So when you go in and look at a standard, we're all excited, because you can link and it, bring up the Common Core standards that you might want to align to also with your science instruction. So we're really excited about that.
So while the Common Core doesn't specifically target social studies, history, science, there is an expectation that your students have a certain knowledge of all of these things in order to be able to do the deep reading that you're talking about. So somebody could, if you wanted to spend like the next year, you could go into the Common Core and develop a scope and sequence for social studies and for science. It's just that that's not what it's about. It's assuming that that's knowledge that you have, and what they're really looking at is, can you read, can you write, can you think critically, can you do math?
So I should probably know this, but I understand that science kneecaps are continuing for a number of years. Do we know when an NGSS assessment is going to be developed? When is that?
2017 will be the first test.
Okay.
2015 will be the last year that they do the science kneecaps.
So is it a spring, do you know, spring of 2017?
That's what we're assuming.
Okay.
And just the other thing, Clyde, on your comment, and to follow up with Elaine's, is the, the focus shift of Common Core Language Arts, of getting kids to be with the skills to closely read technical and content-related texts, will support them in learning content in a deeper way. So, you know, the two are definitely going to hopefully support one another, but they weren't, they weren't composed in tandem.
And I think it's really clear, just based on the fifth grade homework we see coming home, that this is, this conversion is in full gear. Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Willie Allen to 5.0, reports to the board, 5.1 principals report.
Before we go on.
Sorry.
Okay.
Just love talking in your presentation about technology. So I presume there are going to be proposals about spending on technology to make this, that will be required or at least presented as required in order to be able to do all this stuff? You want to give us a hint, or is that going to be a surprise somewhere down the road?
I'd be happy to give you a hint. Won't be anything surprising, I don't think. Last year, you heard us propose, recommend the purchase of a laptop cart for, actually, we hoped for two laptop carts, and then we brought it down to one laptop cart for use in the third and fourth grade. Currently, the third and fourth grade access to computers, or at the time, consisted of three or four classroom computers, PCs, and their access to the lab. So I plan on presenting that again, that proposal of a laptop cart for the third and fourth grade team. Also, the, we have just built into our replacement cycle up in the middle level, this isn't, this isn't new technology, this is just keeping up with our replacement cycle and trying to get a little bit more on top of it. We had originally planned for one replacement of a laptop cart upstairs, which is usually around 18, $19,000. And what we're finding is we really need to replace two because of the date and condition of a second cart. So that's, that's going to be a separate decision packet because that, the one replacement would be in the context of our regular technology budget because it was a plan, but the replacement of the second would be an addition. That one isn't so much related to the Common Core, that's just related to kids need access to reliable technology and devices that aren't a hindrance to what they're, when they're showing what they're knowing. I will tell you though, not on the technology front, but on the programmatic front, I do plan on bringing to the board again a proposal for full-day kindergarten. Because I, I am seeing more and more, this year, all the information that the kindergarten study committee came to last year, none of which is, you know, really new information for anybody. But this year, I'm seeing it play out, watching these standards come to, come to life at school and thinking about our program in kindergarten, and more and more think that we're, we're not doing our kindergarteners any favors by having them start with four months of a half-day program. And what I'm seeing is our kindergarten teachers are having to make decisions on a weekly basis about what not to teach. You know, what are we not going to cover today? And, and I'm seeing those professionals in a funny feeling about that, and, you know, looking to me like, you know, Greg, we're making these decisions, we've got these new expectations and standards, and, and I'm just telling them, you guys do a great job, and, and we have, you know. So that, that is going to be included, and it does very much relate to this presentation, but it's not, it's not necessarily related to technology hardware.
Getting back to the computers, it came up last year when we were talking about these issues, there was some vagueness about the S-PACS in terms of what they require. So now the answer is, you simply have to have a computer for every person to do that, or how does it work?
No, no, we're not proposing going one-to-one computer for every student. We just, we don't know exactly how many students are going to be taking the test at one time. We know there'll be a, a window in which you can get the assessments done. We know that we'll, we're not worried about necessarily having the adequate number of devices in the school. We think that we're set, we'll be pretty well set with that. So, but programmatically, we are concerned that our younger students, especially third and fourth graders, aren't having enough experiences and interfacing with the technology that it's, it's not going to feel like a pencil and a paper. It's going to feel like, I'm in front of this new thing, and I'm being asked to show what I know. So, but no, there's no, there's no indication that we're required to have one-on-one, enough computers for everybody. The testing is expected to be staggered. We don't know exactly, but how many kids are going to be assessing at one time? We've heard that the best, so far, I spoke to a principal a couple weeks ago who said when they did the pilot, they did a third of their kids on desktops. This is very smart. A third of the kids on laptops, and a third of the kids on, on tablets or iPads to see how it would play out. And they said overwhelmingly, the laptops were the preferred platform because you weren't kind of stuck at the station, you were in your own classroom, and the tablets, because of the viewing space, wasn't as ideal. And we found the same thing with the fifth graders.
I can share with the fifth grade, we piloted the ELA portion last year for S-PACS, and we used laptops, used the laptop cart in the fifth grade with the students, and we, we had them use headphones, and they preferred that, and felt more at ease with that because they used them so much on a daily basis, they were comfortable in taking the pilot with that, and prefer doing it rather than going to the lab or using tablets, even having for that, or a desktop.
The fourth graders took it in the lab at, at PCs, you know, similar to the one over there, and we noticed that some of them were pretty stressed and, and found it long, sitting, you know, this far away from the person next to them, and, you know, in a, so.
And so the period, the testing interval.
Yes.
Will be the determinant of how many devices you need.
Yes, but I just want to reiterate, I don't think we're going to be making big decisions about devices based on S-PACS. I think the device, the number of devices at Charlotte is going to be probably adequate. We're going to be, we're moving away from netbooks. We're looking at laptops to be the preferred platform in terms of kids to be interfacing with. We're going to continue to get more tablets that, each budget cycle, that, that can be deployed in classrooms, the teachers can sign out. But it's going to be more programmatic decisions around access and integration as opposed to, we need this many so that kids can take the test.
Thank you. All right, 5.0 for real this time, reports to the board, 5.1 principals report. Does anyone have any questions for Greg or Audrey on the principals' report? Or anything you want to highlight? It's pretty short. All right, thank you. 5.2 CSSU debrief, debrief. And I think everyone was there, everyone here was there. It was a great presentation, I thought, by Laura Sora's, discussing the complexity of health insurance. And if you weren't there, I recommend you watch on RETM. Moving on to 5.4 administrative structure. And this is Elaine.
Yes, so here's what I have as the charge that the board gave me last spring. During the budget cycle, so charge to Superintendent Pinkney, provide the board with a five-year plan for CCS administrative structure, and specifically determine whether changes in administrative structure are warranted, given the reduced number of pupils and staff. So let's just start with that. Does that sound to you like that's what you asked me to do?
Yes.
Okay. So here's my plan, and then we can discuss whether you think there are any, you know, elements missing. So I would elicit from the board and staff their expectations for leadership at Charlotte Central School. Because depending on what you want, if you want somebody to just open the door and make sure that the teachers are there and whatever, that's a different thing than if you're looking for instructional leaders and. Secondly, then elicit from the staff their opinions regarding the efficacy of co-principal versus principal assistant principal model through in-person communications, emails, and an anonymous survey. So I would do a survey monkey. So I've already, I scheduled yesterday to go there after their work session. So they're at a work session, so I'd scheduled that I would be there if anyone to talk to me. I will be there again tomorrow at 3:00. And I've already asked them if they wanted to send me an email, they couldn't, I've gotten two emails. And I will do a survey monkey. So that would be an anonymous survey for people to give their opinion. Interview the current administration separately. Review statewide data and administrator ratios. So the way I'm doing that, I've already started doing that work. I'm looking at it as, okay, when you look at the K eights in Vermont, what's the average enrollment and how many principals, and then which ones fall? So with specific information. Then I also looked at it as pre-K four and five-eight schools, as if Charlotte had two schools, and looked at, well, what are the numbers for Charlotte, the two schools? So in Charlotte, pre-K four, you have 231, and five-eight, you have 194. What is that average in Vermont when you look at pre-K four and five-eight schools? What's the ratio there? So I would share that with you and show you the schools that are, what the numbers are. Review the research literature say, so what does the research tell us about the importance of instructional leadership on student success specifically? And what, if anything, does the research tell us about optimal administrator ratios? I can tell you, I've started doing that a little bit, and that is almost impossible to find. And then provide a recommendation to the board on administrative structure for 2015 through 2018, based on the Bill Smith numbers. So does that sound like what you were hoping for?
Now, does it factor in at all special ed, or that's just totally out of the equation since special education's at the SU?
Right. I think it pretty much factors that out.
Okay.
Especially when I'm looking at the state, because there are so many different models. If we factor special ed in, I don't know what to compare to. Most supervised reunions do not have building-level special ed administrators. Those people are at the SU. So instead of just there being a Megan at the SU, there's a Megan and three other people, and then she deploys them. Our model is to have people locally. So to compare our model then to somebody else's is a difficult thing.
Okay, so the, but the expectation would be that if there was a feeling that that had to change, if we needed more, if we needed less, we would be hearing from you via Megan that.
Right, so right now.
That, you know, you need a .8 instead of .5, or you only need a .4.
So the way we're doing that right now, going into this for the first time this year, is we said, let's assume that Williston and CDU are biggest schools, you know, 12 to 1400 kids, that's 1.0 FTE special ed administrator. What does that mean for everybody else? So you guys are exactly at the right place. Some other school might have too much in terms of, not too much in terms of what they need for administration, but too much in terms of what they're going to get reimbursed by the state. And so those are the kinds of things that we're going to have to figure out.
So as you're looking at administrator to teacher ratios, are you going to pull out the special educators from that? Because they're supervised by someone else.
The ratio I'm looking at is not administrator to teacher, it's administrator to the enrollment. That's what the state gives you.
Okay, okay.
And so then that's not a factor.
Although the educator quality standards, the education quality standards, they do provide an administrator to teacher FTE ratio also.
Yes, they do, and I can share that too.
Yeah.
I will share that. And maybe, yeah.
And what are your discriminators regarding efficacy and efficiency? I mean, so you know that this school has this ratio, and that school has that ratio.
I'm going to tell you what the schools are, and I'm going to let you make your decisions yourself, but.
Well.
I don't know what you're asking me, because I'm not going to go visit those schools to see.
I'm asking for meaningful numbers in terms of the outcomes of the students relative in terms of the administrative structure. I mean, what you've laid out for us, there is strictly, A, Vermont-based, which is shaky to begin with, and B, there's no, it's not based on anything other than people's opinions, is basically what.
Well, all this tells you is what is. It's not an opinion. It's like, here are all the five-eight schools, how many of them there are, what's the average enrollment in the five-eight schools, what, how many administrators they have for that enrollment? And then here are some schools that fit in that cluster about that enrollment and how many administrators they have. And it wouldn't be that hard for me to do the next thing, just time-consuming, to say, okay, well then, how did those particular schools score on the kneecap? But you know what? I can tell you right now what you're going to get out of that, Charlotte is tops on the kneecap. So you're always going to be better than.
And we were before.
So I'm just saying that.
Well, I think part of it is, we asked for this after we got the five-year plan for reducing faculty. So it was, if we're reducing faculty, should we look at the administrative structure? Should there, if we're paring down faculty, you know, does that warrant looking at whether or not we should pare down administration? So I think that's why looking at the student numbers, because that's what drove the.
Right.
The reduced number of faculty, or the proposed reduced number of faculty.
And so when you're, when you're making the decision about faculty, you're thinking about what are the class sizes, and what's an average class size, and what's a reasonable class size, and what's an effective class size, and that is up for discussion too, right? And same thing with administrators. So we're doing kind of the same thing. We're looking at what is the right ratio of, and, and really, your point is well-taken, it's not just of students, it's a, what is the ratio of administrator to teacher? Because the work that you want administrators to do, that instructional leadership, that supervision and evaluation, that leverages student learning, that makes a heck of a difference if they've got like 30 per administrator, or if they have 10 per administrator.
I acknowledge I'm going to lose this discussion, but as I said, it's not based on anything. I mean, it's just, it's, this is what those people do, this is what these people do, let me finish.
Right.
This is what those people think about it. You know, you refer to the kneecaps, well, apparently, the kneecaps weren't all that hot because they're going to disappear. So every time you renorm a test, and that's what the disappearance of the kneecaps is, is just renorming of tests, you have, you introduce a whole new set of variables where you didn't have any solid footing in the first place. And this, it's.
I wasn't going to bring the kneecaps into it myself.
This is based on Vermont, and even more than Vermont, CSSU, so it's insular.
But it is not based on CSSU. It really is based on Vermont, but that is just one element, the element of what are the numbers, because I think it's important for you to see, how do we compare to other people in terms of numbers? But it is also going to be based on, what is the best research out there around school leadership? And I think it's the Wallace Foundation. It is, oh, guess what? Wallace Foundation, again, Learning Point, and who is this? Educational Research. So I think that the information in here about what, what you, what you're expecting administrators to do and how that leverages learning for your students is the important kind of research part of this. And then you'll just see what the numbers are.
May I see those?
Any other questions or concerns?
So how about, I mean, do you guys think it's important to see what other schools in the state are doing?
Yes.
I mean, you can do whatever you want with it once I show it to you, but.
I mean, I personally don't think looking at the kneecaps is that helpful. And I think, as you said, it's really hard to know if, if we knew having, you know, this, you know, having two principals would make every school, it's, that's just one factor.
You know, and there's probably a practical thing too, in terms of if you're looking at, well, co-principals or a principal and an assistant, and what does that mean in terms of the budget? Right? Because that's one of the factors you want to consider too.
And what does that mean for continuity, for how long you keep an assistant?
Yeah, so some of the research is going to tell you. Yeah, so some of the research is going to tell you that, you know, principals need to stay there for about six years before, not before, but to have the optimal impact.
I think the combination of data that you're proposing to collect is, that's good.
Okay. If anybody thinks of anything else that they hope I can get, and it's, I can get it, I will.
Just for the record note that I'm accepting myself from that evaluation. I don't think that we're going to learn anything meaningful from what, of course, we're pursuing.
So do you have some other things that you think would make it more meaningful?
I would take a broader look at national models, but also, I mean, you don't have time-
If it's easy for me to get it.
Really make this kind of a study.
But numbers, ratios, that kind of thing nationally? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it has to be, I mean, there's so many, it has to be tied to outcomes. And so then the question arises, well, that's the point.
But again, Charlotte's going to be at the top of the heap, no matter what. And leadership, you know, what one of these books says right here? This, I think it's this one. That's going to tell you that second to the classroom teacher, leadership has the most impact on student learning.
Well, I'm sure that-
And I think that potentially, it can have even a greater impact. Because absent leadership, people just do their own thing. They shut the door, they do their own thing. And so now, your kid might have a great first grade teacher, who's really paying attention to the common core, and next-gen science standards, and what technology needs to happen. Great, you're so happy. And then second grade, maybe your kid is in a class where they do sailboats all year. And it's, and there's research around that too. That if your kid gets a bad teacher in that string, that reduces the success of the, the academic success of the student permanently.
I hope we would all deduce that without having to be given that information. I mean, the teacher-
The fact is, that's what leadership does, though. They ensure that we don't have those ebbs and flows of excellence in the classrooms.
We then return to the question of what administrative structure is required-
That's what we're hoping to do.
To ensure that.
Right.
And we've already established that we have two conflicting sets of data. Pre-two principals and after-two principals. And in both cases, Charlotte is at the top of the heap. I think it's time to move on to the next-
If you think of anything, though, that you think I could get, I would be happy to do that.
Thank you. 5.5, or did you have anything you wanted to add? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Union versus non-union impression?
How do you mean?
In a union school, teacher, junior, administrator versus like a private school that has not such a strength in what their administrators are, what their test scores are.
So do you mean like public versus private? Or do you also just mean union, non-union within?
Probably have a bullet.
I don't know. I'm, I can look at that. I don't know what, I will.
Speaking historically from where my kids came from.
Yeah.
The difference is that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Were your kids in?
They were in private schools in Los Angeles, not in the public school system there.
Which I presume was a non-union setting.
Okay.
Just to say one thing. What would be useful to me is to have, you know, a rich discussion of what other options that we have, right? Because Clyde's made the obvious point that it's hard to quantify subjective data, right? So we're not building a bridge. So, you know, Clyde's never going to get the information that he wants to any level of precision, because this is something where there's not a, it's not like a scientific experiment, there's no control.
Right.
You can compare apples and oranges in public schools to private schools, and there's so many other factors at play. You know, Charlotte comes at the top of the heap in kneecaps. You know, there are other factors besides administrative structure, teaching structure. There's all sorts of stuff that you can't really tease apart from the data. So certainly no harm done in gathering that information. But for us to just kind of look at what our options are, and what the relative costs are, what the relative, what our expectations are based on, and I'm open to subjective interpretation. If you tell us you've seen two or three examples in your own personal experience, that to me would carry some weight as much as sort of data, which is influenced by so many other factors that it's really hard to pin down.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Thanks, Elaine. 5.5, first quarter financial management report. I don't know if people have questions or comments. Bob is available if we need him. Obviously, we wish we were not in a $38,000 unfavorable position, but-
And it's because of the revenues, I'm noticing.
So any questions or comments? Okay. Hopefully, that becomes favorable soon. Moving on, 6.0, discussion matters. 6.1, budget. And 6.1.1, forum preparation, November 19th, 6:00 PM. I was planning that I will update the slide presentation from last year. I'll try to get it out well in advance, so people can find errors or make suggestions for additions. Is there anything else that people want to do with that, at the forum beyond the slideshow? Does anyone want to do it instead of me? I'll get Lynn or Patrice to come back. I expect, I expect I will be unable to answer audience questions, but, you know, hopefully others will be there to help. All right. So I will try to work on that, since we have some information from Bob, and I'll send it out as soon as I can, so you can have a chance to look at it ahead.
Well, we have Bob there.
What's the date?
It's the half hour prior to our regular budget meeting. So if Bob can be there, I think, don't have to be so scared about questions.
6.1.2, budget buddies. Last year, we had Jenny and Abby as budget buddies. And I don't know if all the other school boards have budget buddies or not. So we put it on to discuss whether or not we want to do that again. So I open that up to the board.
It's a good idea, if you get people who are engaged.
Okay.
People liked Jenny, I mean, maybe liked is too strong a word. She enjoyed learning the process.
I thought it was positive. I know Abby had some frustration that she felt like they came in too late in the process, and there wasn't enough opportunity to really research the questions that, you know, she had in mind. And, I'm sorry, do I keep kicking you over the table?
We kind of feel like that too. It always seems like we're coming right in.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, the bigger foundational questions about, you know, potential changes to the school and that kind of thing, it's not a sustained process for those kinds of conversations. And it wouldn't be now either, because nothing's really changed. But I still think their, their communications were helpful, their questions were helpful. I don't see any reason not to do it. I don't think Abby would maybe do it again, but we could, you know, ask people.
And I think last year we pro, I think last year we solicited in the newsletter and then Charlotte News. Do we want to do that same way? Just, I think we only had two people interested last year, that's how many budget buddies we had, so.
So could we then seek out people?
Yeah.
If we had someone in mind, or, you know.
Recruit.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
I think it'd be good to do both.
Oh, yeah.
You mean in addition to advertising?
Yeah, but if you know someone is interested and is good in budgeting, that would be great.
I don't know if they're interested, but I'm going to try to-
Stronger, yeah. All right.
Is there a limit to how many we want?
Probably, at some point.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't anticipate a crowd showing up, but-
There should be more board members than budget buddies.
Yeah, I think so too. So I'd say we'll hope for it to get maybe two or three, and then- Okay. So I'll get, I'll get in touch with the news and with Naomi about putting something in the newsletter. And as soon as I get any names, I guess I'll pass them along ahead of time. Yeah. I'll have to get back to you on like the timeframe. I don't, I mean, I don't think we can get anybody in place before the forum, so I guess we can, we'll have to play the part by ear. All right. 6.2-
Well, one thing we could say, though, in the publicity for it, is that-
Please come to the forum.
Please come to the forum if you're interested.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Good point. All right. 6.2, communications, boards corner. And Brett was kind enough to forward me the publication schedule. I didn't print it out or bring it with me. But do we have an idea for something that we want as our next submission? Do we want it to be about the budget? Do we want to take a break? Do we want to?
I think it could be an outline of what our budget process and dates will be in.
Okay. Does that seem, any other ideas?
Do you have a follow-up on the facility stuff, or is that going to be to death?
There is going to be an article in Citizen this week. And I know Brett is writing something for the Charlotte News as well. Not for me. This is, I know they're publishing their own, so maybe we should wait for those to go from there. And truthfully, we haven't made a lot of decisions, so.
Right. And remember, yeah, remember, we're supposed to get questions to Mark.
Yeah, if anybody has questions, I'm still waiting.
Or things that he want, that we want the committee to figure out. Although that's 6.3. So 6.2, so I will draft up something about the budget process and send it around, unless somebody else-
Thank you.
Wants to. All right. Moving on, 6.3, facilities. Mark?
I have nothing to add. I haven't gotten any questions from anybody willing to entertain them. Encouraged. Have not had any feedback at all from the forum last time, other than getting a call from someone at Citizen asking a couple of questions.
We concluded most of those questions prior to December, wasn't that?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm not, I'm just, whatever you want.
I've got quite a few, I just haven't finished it yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Great.
So, and I just, I think this is going to be an ongoing conversation for some time, so.
And we'll be reminded next week at our budget meeting, if we haven't yet. Worked out questions from Mark, who can help remind us again. But yeah, if he can get them before their, the next facilities meeting, that'd be good.
The committee is meeting on Monday, 18th.
We have a meeting, our regular meeting on 18th, but we'll also have our next regular meeting beginning in December, so.
Okay. Great. All right. 7.0, action matters. 7.1, approve purchase services. Do you have a motion to approve purchase services?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? These are the services that we have traditionally chosen to purchase through the SU. We're not required to, but previous boards have found it's more cost-effective and less of a hassle to do it that way. But we are not required, so. Is there any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Abstention? No, I didn't hear that. Okay. 7.2, approval of third-grade field trip to Biado, Montreal. Do you have a motion to approve the third-grade field trip?
So moved.
So moved.
Mark's the second. Any discussion? We have to approve it because it's out of the country.
It's Cher. She takes a bus. She works on it, it's an annual thing. She, she works on it months in advance. It's a very complicated process, but she has it down in terms of calling the border, you know, a couple of weeks in advance, and then a couple of days in advance, and-
Having already sent in my check for this field trip, I can tell you that it's very detailed. It's a three-page field trip. Very detailed, how they get across, when, when they're going, how many parents they need. It's, yeah, it's, this is like moving armies.
She's very organized with that, yes.
And the kids are psyched, so we probably have a bunch of third graders here next time.
And it's a tradition.
It's a charter bus.
Yeah, it's a charter, yeah, they take a, they take a charter bus. It's not just a school bus.
With bathroom.
It's good. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? 8.0, consent agenda. Is there a need to pull anything out? All right. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? And I guess, do you have the order standing? Thank you. 9.0, directors' comments. Do you want to go first, Clyde? What are you saying?
The reason I moved this to director's comments is because, unlike last year, I didn't take a lot of notes. Everything is on their website. And most of it's not worth looking at, with the exception of, they did provide a statistical abstract of where education is in Vermont. Number of students, cost, performance outcomes. It's interesting to look at. It's fact-based. Beyond that, it's a little tough to know where to begin. You have to remember, there are 272 school boards in Vermont. There were 38 represented at this meeting. So before I go on, let me sound like I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth. You guys should all go. Because it's the best that there is. I mean, it's all that there is. The other side of that coin is, if you go, you realize that educational philosophy in Vermont has essentially been co-opted, some might say hijacked, by a particular mindset and a particular agenda to wit. One of the speakers at this thing was the director of the Vermont ACLU, the American Civil Liberties Union. Folks, I fail to understand what the fact that Thomas Jefferson had slaves has to do with any of the stuff that we talked about tonight. And it's, it's getting a little bizarre. And to tie this in, I think we were all there for Laura's comments, which was a very interesting presentation. But if you harken back to what she said, and think about the number of times you heard the phrase, "I don't know", when you were looking for substantive answers from people who should know, like this fellow Johnson, who is the, what is his role? I forget, but the seminar that I went to with him was about Act 77. Everybody knows what Act 77 is. Act 77 is the law that's going to require every student to have an individualized learning program. The phrase "I don't know" came up over and over again when the fellow was asked questions about the implications of various parts of the law. And what that translates into is that there's a bureaucracy that will make administrative decisions that really are the substance of the law, rather than the legislation, legislation itself. Which means that these folks will be free to determine, for example, what constitutes an individual learning program. And you may think, so what? But that has the potential- think, so what? But that has the potential to be a phenomenally expensive procedure. And so when you hear these people say they don't know what the answer is in regards to legislation that has been passed, one of two things is going to happen. They're either going to ignore it and just kind of take your word for it, or they're really going to pay attention to it, in which case it'll probably give the expression, "Cost has no meaning, a new meaning. It'll just be expensive beyond belief." An awful lot of the, the discussion was student presentations, which of course your government reaction is that's a good thing. But when that's all that there is, you get pretty quickly the idea that, hey, we're talking about individual achievement. You don't need to hear about it from every school district in the state. That's an exaggeration. But the point is, they fell back on that excessively rather than, for example, the book that Elaine gave you, this fellow Nathan Levinson, Work Smarter, do you know, recall the title?
That she gave me tonight? Smarter Budget, Smarter Schools.
Yeah. This is an interesting book because there are facts in it, there's information in it. But this fellow only got to talk for about an hour, and he was the quote keynote speaker. So if you were looking for substance and information and knowledge that could help you create a smarter school, you didn't get it. For example, relative to the conversation that I was having with Elaine, class size, this fellow refers to the fact that 30 years of research demonstrates class size has almost nothing to do with student achievement. On the other hand, it's a major linchpin of how we approach our budget. So I go on for a long time. The point is this. You need to go, you need to hear the conversations, you need to see what people are thinking about. But you have to understand that substantive thought with these folks is in decline. So my net for my trip to the school board convention is, it was interesting. I am getting a little tired of hearing the governor's Claire Oglesby story. Has everybody heard it? I've heard it every time, every time the guy speaks, and that's five times now. It always begins with that. And we hear about how he was dyslexic and, you know, where's the beef for those of you who remember those advertisements? Where are the things that we can use to actually improve education? So it was a little frustrating this year, to be quite honest. Any questions?
Oh, well, I'm sorry, this doesn't address the substance of what you said, but are they ever going to move it out of Lake Maori?
I hope not, because that's the best part of the whole thing. Have you folks ever been to Lake Maori? It's a beautiful place in the fall. It's way ahead of the Berlin Concert. Yeah, it is a long hike. But the answer is I don't think so, because I think it's cost-effective for them there.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Any other directors' comments?
Just a quick one. I flipped through a copy of seven days newspaper today, and there's an interesting article in there today about, I got to read about half of it before I had to get going, but I have it. It's about Windsor, Vermont, and what they're facing, their school board is facing. They've been up for their budget seven times and have failed each time and still are operating without a school budget right now. So it was an interesting read to see striking the balance between what the town and providing quality education. So just encourage, I will finish it myself, but it was an interesting read for the little piece I got to read before I had to get going.
Are they approaching the limit?
I, I don't know. I did not get, I don't know what the limit is.
Probably another couple of months, so, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the, I mean, one of the points I did get is it's been 20 years since any school district has gotten this far along without a, without a budget, so. Just.
I wasn't aware of that.
Neither was I, hadn't heard a thing about it. It's a, I'm not even exactly sure what Windsor is.
Was it a big increase? I mean, what was the, what's the problem?
No, in fact, it wa, oh, no, I take that back. I forget the exact increase. It was a significant increase. They've come down each time, obviously, and still can't get it through. By, by significant margins, percentages. And I'll just keep talking. They did, they did pass it the first time. It got through the first time, and then there was a petition to revoke, so.
So it must have been close the first time.
It was close the first time.
Erica, Erica Adora? I guess my only, I'm not a crafter myself, but the PTO's craft fair is Saturday, including a PTO bake sale. So if you are so inclined, you should go because that helps support a lot of things that we can't pay for through our regular budget, is supplemented by funds raised by the PTO. All right, 10.0, confirm next meeting dates. There's quite a few. November 19th is our budget forum at 6:00, followed by the budget, a budget meeting at 6:30. And that will be at CCS in the library. We have another budget meeting, December 3rd at 6:30, also at the CCS library. December 17th, budget meeting at 6:30 in the CCS library. And January 7th and 14th, 6:30 on the 7th in the library, 6 o'clock on the 14th, that'll be the hearing on approval of the final budget. We have CSSU meetings, December 18th at 5:30, a budget meeting. And that's at the central office, the meeting. But another budget meeting, oh, I'm sorry, dates are backwards, but there's also a budget meeting, November 20th at 5:30, also at central office. And a board chairs meeting. All right, 11.0, negotiations. 11.1, I guess this is you. I don't.
I don't have anything to say other than what was in, said in executive session. I don't know if this is intended to be.
A placeholder.
Okay.
Is there any need to go into executive session?
I don't think so. I mean, we did that before the meeting, so.
Is there, does anyone see a need to go into executive session prior to the next negotiations meeting, which is then?
Which is the 19th, correct?
Right.
The same day as our budget forum.
Oh, so let me think about this for a second. Hold on.
You mean now?
Right.
I have a, I have a question based on what Laura was saying. That I think, boy, I think it's executive session. Because it'll, it will, it could bear on, not that I, it could bear on strategy.
Okay.
Talking about employee contribution to help here, kind of a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess the answer is yes. I have indeed.
So do you want to move into?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Sure.
All right, we are going into executive session. I can't.